Thank you all for your.
You already stood up.
Yeah, I think I was gonna lose no matter what.
No, I think it's an honor you're there.
Thank you. What I'll do this evening is try to give you all a brief overview of our streets program, what we do, how we do it, why we do it, some of the numbers that go with that, some statistics. As you know, those can be twisted and turned a little bit, but try to be objective with that as I can. And hopefully, at the end of a few minutes of painfully listening to me talk, you'll have a better understanding of what we do and something about how we do it. One of the first elements to understand is our MicroPaver program. It's a formal computer program. It's been around since the late 70s, originally developed by the U.S. Corps of Engineers to evaluate military airfield pavements. They needed a way to compare and prioritize their work across the nation's airbases. And the Corps of Engineers developed a very detailed program that expanded to all military pavements and then got expanded to the public and is now very widely accepted. All 50 states don't use this particular program, but all of them are using something similar. Quite a number are using this program in the state highway departments. Quite a number of local and municipal, state, county governments are also using it. It's a very fairly easy program to use, very widely accepted in the industry. So we're pleased that we've been able to do that and capture it. As I said, it was started in the 70s with the federal government. So it's not a new app that just came out through Apple and somebody tried to write something that we can just quickly, you know, assimilate something. It's a very proven product. The framework of the program is we set these streets in town up in segments. For the most part, those are block to block. One block would be one segment. The defects within the program for both asphalt and concrete are very well defined with specific information. So it's very easy for different people to look at the defects on a roadway and rate it relatively the same score. So the training on it's a little intense, but once you get that and understand how it works, it's a very good program to use and very consistent. We've been using it since 1989 on Cape's roadways. The end of that, it isn't just a numerical average. Each street segment gets a rating. And that's a number that's put into the program, but the program doesn't simply do a mathematical average of that. There's quite an involved algorithm that it uses to assess the conditions, whether it's concrete or asphalt, the age of the road, some traffic loading information is input in there, all locally input, so it's very customizable to our roadways, to our community. With all of that data, it grinds it out and then spits out what we call a pavement condition index, a PCI is what you all hear the term often. And so each street segment comes out with a number that's assigned. And I'm pleased to say that our staff has performed well over the years. We had training from the company that manages the program in both 14 and 16, and our guys scored very well and were complimented by the professionals that do this. In fact, in 14, some of them helped us complete the evaluations for that year, which helped us greatly in the 2015 TTF development. But we intentionally had the professionals rate some street segments and our guys rate some street segments. We were pleased to find that our scoring was very close to their scoring. So we have quite a bit of confidence in our guys' ability to objectively evaluate a roadway and give it a proper score. The program also has a predictive modeling capability that lets you define some parameters that can vary, assign local costs, assign some goals that you want to achieve, and it will grind out and give you a chart that gives you some assessment of if you have these parameters, you can expect this performance from your roadways. Back in 2014, as part of the TTF V development, the Public Works Department and the company, Scott McDonald, was here, he's the head guy, and we went through some training for that, ran three or four models of what if we just want to maintain the rating we have? What if we want to attain a specific numeric rating? What if we want to get caught up with all of the streets that are poor and serious and then maintain a rating? We weren't surprised that we got fairly consistent information from that. We were disappointed somewhat that the conclusion of that is that we need to be spending $5 million a year on roadway maintenance over a five-year period and then about $2 million a year after that to maintain a roadway condition that is in the good category. I'll give you some numeric information about that in a moment. But we found that it's quite expensive if you're going to keep your roads in a good condition. I don't think that's a surprise, but $5 million a year is a pretty big step for a local government. Currently, over the last few years, we've been running around a million a year to give you some perspective on that. And the ratings are 1 to 100 in the program. 1 is obviously the road in there. 100, it's a brand-new road. 76 to 100 is considered good. 56 to 75 is fair. 41 to 55 is poor. 40 and below is serious. So we don't cheat the system and say, well, serious is just 10 and below. The bottom 40% is serious. The bottom 55% is poor or serious. So when we rate a road poor, we're not just getting a real thin sliver of our cross-section of the roadways in town. Those cover a pretty big range of scores. So we think it's a pretty fair assessment of the way things work. Our city, the roads we maintain is about 230 centerline miles. To define that a little better, Mount Auburn is four lanes from the high school to Lexington. Centerline mile would be what's the distance from the high school to Lexington. Lane miles would be four times that. So if it was four miles from Cape High School to Lexington, that's the centerline measurement. If you counted lane miles, it'd be 16 lane miles. But centerline miles, we have 230 miles roughly that we maintain. There are some others that are private and Cape Specials and MoDOT around, but that's what we take care of. That translates to about 33 million square feet of roadway. That's important to us because the MicroPaver program does everything in square footage. So we have to have those numbers in that rate. To do a little comparison, in 2015, when we were preparing the TTF V program, 74% of our roadways were rated good, 18% were fair, 5% were poor, 3% were serious. That translates to about 2.5 million square feet of poor and serious roadway conditions in 2015. In 2018, following the work that we've done with TTF V in 16, 17, and the current contract, 78% is good, 19% is fair, 3% is poor, and get ready for this one, 0.000006% is serious. So we have made good progress in getting rid of the serious category. So in 2018, over 25 million square feet out of the 33 million are rated good. And so we're very pleased that we're making progress. The city's current PCI rating with the improvements we've made over the last two or three years is actually 83. We would strive to stay somewhere in the upper 70s ideally. We're above that right now. So while at the coffee shops on the morning times and the conversations flying around and they're saying that the whole town's falling apart, every street in town looks like a bomb fell on it, the data doesn't support that. Certainly, we've got some areas of roads that are very, very bad, but it is not a case where the entire city street system is just falling apart. We're actually not in terrible shape. So what are we doing with all this? Our city crew works every day, every week. We've got 22 people in that division, but only 11 of them are assigned to actually doing street work. The others are doing mowing and street signs and signals and striping and other things, tree limbs and cutting trees. So the whole 22 that are in the budget for that division aren't really doing all concrete street repair. But we do try to keep at least one crew doing that every week. Once upon a time, we had an asphalt laydown machine and we also did asphalt repairs. That machine died a few years ago and we couldn't get parts, we couldn't repair it, we just had to scrap it. The cost to replace it was several hundred thousand dollars and we decided not to do that. So we don't do the asphalt repairs anymore. Our crew will do, in an annual average over the last three or four years, 35,000 to 40,000 square feet of repair with the operating budgets that we have. And that's doing as much as we can, but you can see compared to 33 million or 2.5 million square feet of roadway that was in poor condition in 2015, if we're only doing 40,000 a year with our crew, we're not gonna get there. But those guys are working hard and going after it. Big topic is always potholes. Our crew, we try to keep a pothole crew going when we can. We, on average, through the year, will run between 200 to 250 potholes a year. Unfortunately, a lot of those are repeat customers. And so it isn't that we've got thousands and millions of potholes every week that we've got to deal with, but snow and ice, sometimes we'll pull the patches out, they just deteriorate over time. The coal mix that we have to use in the winter doesn't hold up very well, so we're, during the winter months, we're doing a lot of repeat business on our potholes. But we are working at it. We are excited that we've got a new pothole machine coming, hopefully in October, late October. And of course, the vendor will tell us that, and then after that, it's gonna be every two weeks. And when's it coming? Two more weeks. When's it coming? Two more weeks. But we do have that on order. It is scheduled for delivery in October. We should be able to maintain that level of performance for pothole repair, a couple hundred a week with one man. We may even be able to grow and do more than that with one man instead of the three or four men that it takes now. So we're really excited that we can sustain our pothole response effort with a lot less manpower and let those other guys get back to the concrete crew and be doing the actual bigger repairs, the permanent repairs. Another thing that we're doing, I'm very familiar with you guys and most of the community, the Transportation Trust Fund program has been very successful for the last 20 years. Phases 1 through 4 of that program had a primary focus on either new roadways or expanding roadways. I think Mount Auburn got made to four lanes with part of that independence. The new VMD roadway sections were done with some of those funds. So the first four cycles of that had quite an emphasis on new things. TTF V took a turn, and there was a real emphasis to let's repair and maintain what we got. And so I believe over half of those funds was dedicated to maintenance in TTF V, and we're working through that now. In 2016, using some funds that were left over from TTF III, the old Armstrong Road money, if you know it that way, we were able to do a contract that year with those funds. We did 300,000 square feet, 10 times what the city crew would average on a year, for about $1.5 million worth of work. 2017 was the rest of the Armstrong Road money and that year's TTF V allocation. We did 388,000 square feet of roadway, about 2.6 million expense. 2018 is still under construction right now, but they're about 85% complete with the list. That will complete about 200,000 square feet of repairs, roughly $1.2 million of expense. So we're making some progress. That's 600, almost a million, 900,000 square foot of roadway that's been repaired in the last two years. So we're making some good progress on the areas, and we're getting the worst ones first, which we're very pleased with. 2019, 20, and 21 are still funded. They're in the program with TTF V. 19's contract is estimated to do 149,000 square feet at just around $900,000 of expense. 2020 has 141,000 square feet at about $850,000 of expense. 2021, 160,000 square feet at about $960,000 of expense. So you see, we're still running about that million-dollar-a-year figure investing in our roadways. And so we're making progress. It's just a little slower than we might like. Also, remind everybody, there is the interactive map on our website where we or our citizens can go there through the city website, look at the map, see where those roadway sections are. And if they hover the little mouse over that, it'll tell them what year that's scheduled to be done, so they can get quite a bit of information just by looking at that interactive map on the website if they're interested. A really common question is, okay, that's all great, y'all are doing good and trying to do some good things, but how come my street's horrible and it ain't on the list? And that's a really good question. To backstory of that a little bit, we had the vote for TTF V in 2015. We were using 2014 data to establish that list. That work will be done from 2016 to 2021. We got a pretty good crystal ball, but we can see about till lunch tomorrow. After that, it gets real foggy. So we just can't tell which streets are gonna go bad the fastest. So we understand that those things are happening. We're trying, we keep our list. If we're able to do some small repairs with our guys, we go do that. If it's too big for our guys to tackle, then we try to get it on a contract list and find some funding to do that. Occasionally, we get lucky and pull that off. Sometimes we don't get lucky and a roadway section will stay on the list until we can get it onto a contract. We've got three more years of contract work coming. Hopefully, we get good bid prices with that, and we can stretch those dollars farther than we expect, and where we have those opportunities, we do that. We do recognize that some roads are bad, that aren't on the list, and we've got a way of trying to deal with that. It's not perfect, but we're not neglecting that either. So in summary, to maintain our streets the way we probably would like to have them in that 77 to 83 range of PCI, we need $5 million a year for five years and $2 million a year after that. That's a lot more than we're able to do right now. The MicroPaver program is being used well. We think it is a really good tool. It's not perfect, but it really gives us some good objective information, helps us make objective decisions on prioritizing where the money needs to be spent first, get the worst streets fixed early on regardless of their location in town. It's based on the numbers, not based on geography. City crews are doing what we can every year with the resources we have. The TTF program, the first four cycles did a lot of work in town. Cycle V is doing a lot of maintenance work, and we've done a lot. We've got a lot left to do between now and 2021. We're excited about that. I think we will continue to see our PCI rating, PCI rating stay where it is, or maybe even increase a little bit because there will be, for those few years, when those roads are still new, we're gonna have really good scores on those. So we're excited about that. Closing statement, we know we've got a lot of street work to do. We're tackling it as best we can with either our crews and our equipment or by the contracts when we've got the funding to do that. We're fortunate that the voters have trusted us once again with TTF V. We've still got three more years of work in front of us that's scheduled that we'll make some more improvements to our community. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have or try to make up something if I don't know the answer.
He's always so honest. I have a question. TTF VI is coming up again in 2020. You mentioned that for TTF V, a lot of the analysis was done in 2014.
Right.
Okay, when will we do that analysis again to upgrade it so that a lot of the current streets that weren't originally in that plan will be in that plan?
We actually do half the city every year. So every two years, everything gets updated.
Okay.
We were fortunate in 14 to get the company to come in and help us, and we actually did the whole town that year. You know, we were blessed to have some things work out where that happened. If we wanted to pay them to come back and help us again, we could, but they're not cheap, so we may not do that. But we actually don't just do this every five years. Every year, our staff goes out and rates half the city. Next summer, they go out and rate the other half of the city. So the ratings never are more than 18 months old.
And the algorithm takes into account a rating that's a year older. So when it compares pavements to pavement, it takes that into account. So I think maybe that is pretty good.
Yes, part of the input data is the age of that pavement. When was it put down? The program utilizes that age. So even if we've got a roadway independence that's a few years old now here, between here and Kings Highway, and, but the age of that roadway is in there. So the program is making an assessment of the wear and tear, the type of traffic loading that we put into the program that that roadway would have. So it does a lot more than just average numbers. It figures those things into it. Good question, though, but we, the data that we use for the TTF VI program, that vote will be in 2020, so we'll be using the 2019 data.
Okay, good. Any other questions? I would hope that, you know, one thing that everybody on the council hears pretty often is, what about this pothole? What about that pothole? And I wanted to have this presentation so that people could watch it on TV or be here, and hopefully they'll see it and understand more and be able to go to the website, find their street and look, and if they've got questions, then we can deal with that.
Yes.
So.
I have a question. Stan, you mentioned the pothole machine that's coming in October and how, you know, the workload's gonna take one person to operate that. And some of these streets that weren't on the list in 2016, or whenever that was, will that excess crew that was working potholes before be able to tackle some of these issues? Or will some of those issues still be too big for the city crews to handle?
If it's less than a block, we've got a chance of attacking it with city crews. If it gets bigger than that, it's hard for us. Our guys are capable of doing that amount of work. Our guys aren't capable of turning off the phone while we do that amount of work. We can't make the windstorm stop. We can't make other things stop. You know, a tree falls down across the highway, we gotta stop doing this and go do that. So the reason we don't tackle the really big sections is we just can't stay on them and get them done like a contractor can.
Sure.
Which is very frustrating to the residents if we disappear for two weeks, they're wanting to know why.
Right.
And rightfully so. So we try to limit our work to something less than a block, half-block, one side of the street. So if it's in that range, we'll get it on our list and we'll try to get to it as fast as we can. If it's bigger than that, then we pretty much are forced to where we've got to kind of work it into a contract. We've been fortunate, the first two years of the TTF program, well, three counting the 2016 work, we estimate the pricing for the anticipated work at a certain dollar figure. We've been fortunate to get bids that came in below that dollar figure. So each of those years, we've been able to squeeze an extra street or a section of street in to the contract work where we can. Hopefully, that trend continues. We don't book that till it actually happens, but we've had good luck with the bids. If we continue that, that lets us expand that work effort some more.
Thanks.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Thank you all.
That's a quick comment, I guess, or ask you to comment on the fact that if the gas tax increase happens in the fall, the noted addition to Cape Girardeau would be about $600,000 per year when it's fully implemented. What effect would that have on the condition of our streets if we were to invest all of that in taking care of our streets?
Well, certainly that bumps us up from roughly a million a year to a million five. So we're gonna increase our local productivity by 50%, just using some rough numbers. So certainly, it'll make a big difference. It doesn't get us to that four or five million a year projection that we needed based on the program.
But if it made us.
But certainly, that will make a big difference.
But if we were disciplined and made all that go to our taking care of, at least it builds that base, which needs to be 2 million.
Right.
You know, the 5 million for five years is to kind of catch us up. But if we, if we could have that base of 1.5 to 2 million, then if we can find the money somewhere to catch us up, then we're kind of in a, being a pretty good place.
Certainly, that million and a half to 2 million range in the, you know, that five to 10-year window, if you get caught up, the 2 million a year pretty much lets you keep and maintain your road ratings. So that would be a big step forward in a good direction. Thank you.
Steve didn't have anything to say?
He covered it all.
He covered it all?
He does a great job.
He does a great job. Steve, I still want you to come up here just a minute. I really thought you might get up and do part of this, and I was gonna mention that, you know, this is probably the last time you'd be standing here before the council giving a report on this since you retire September 1st. So I just wanted to publicly thank you for your leadership and providing Stan all the information he's got so he can give this report and so forth. But you've been with our Public Works Department how many years?
A little over 41, four months.
41, four months. Well, we're gonna miss your pretty face here at this meeting when you retire.
I'll be here next week.
I know you'll be here next week, but you weren't scheduled for any presentation next week like this week, so I had to make you get up there this week and at least say something.
Well, the good part is we've got a lot of great employees. You know, we've got 80-some in Public Works and 30-some in Lions, and I've been in on them hires on, oh, probably 10 or 12, so. That's probably the bright spot for me is we've got a lot of great employees, done a lot of great.
Well, your legacy has left that department with a lot of great employees, and we thank you. We'll have some more fun with him later, probably. That takes care of our presentations, unless anybody got any more questions about streets and whatnot. Again, I hope the public watches this and they can learn something like each of us have learned something tonight. Communication and reports, council. I'll just kind of go down the line. Anybody have any? Think hard? No? Victor?
Well, yeah, would now be appropriate to talk about the...
Yes.
Okay. Talked with Bob earlier today, appreciate that conversation, just about the kind of the ongoing conversation regarding Copperfield Court and the flooding that happens there from time to time. I greatly appreciate the staff who has spent quite a bit of time over the past few weeks chatting with me and helping me try to make sense of various city codes, and I can't say that I'm quite there yet, but had a few more general questions for tonight if, and perhaps, you know, certainly don't intend to try to have any action happen, but if some of these questions need to be, you know, put off for a further...
You got the questions, ask them. That's what we're here for.
I do. A very general question I have is, as the city is responsible for city streets, is the city also responsible for dealing with any repeated flooding that takes place in those streets?
I would say we have all of our city streets at some time. If they exceed the designed rainfall for that, for that drainage system, all of them flood. So we, there's an expectation that there's some flooding within all the design. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Some worse, some a lot worse than others.
Yeah. Well, sure. I think in this, in this particular case, the city has determined in the past that some human interaction on that street has created a bad flooding problem. during certain rainfall. And I don't know about inches or whatever and all that. But I guess my, my question is, I mean, does that happen already with the, within the city where the city will go in and rectify a problem that is causing a problem on our city streets?
My experience, and I'll ask staff as well to correct me if I'm wrong, but my experience is that where we have easements to do that work, yes, there are times that we do go in to do work on an easement to help alleviate funding, flooding. Beyond where we don't have easements, I don't believe we typically do that. Is that accurate, Steve?
You mean like private property? That's what you're.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had to have an easement to do work on private property or we don't, or we don't do it.
There are a large number of stormwater projects which are identified in the latest stormwater issue that passed, that were identified that, yeah, will help alleviate issues a lot of different places around the city. But all of those are generally done on city property or on a city right of way or easement so that we can alleviate an issue that may happen on a city street or in the neighborhood. And we've done a lot of those in the past and we continue to do those. But when it comes to actually going on a private property and altering that property to alleviate something, we cannot do that. I mean, you'd set a precedent, you'd be, you've got issues all over the city where if you get an eight inch rain, you're going to have, in a short period of time, you're going to have a lot of flooding issues that are there quickly and allow them to go down quickly because that's the nature of rain. And but you can't really go on. I mean, we've had other, other concerns since I've been on the council in a couple of different areas where that situation arises and, you know, the water get up in people's yards and right next to their house, sometimes in their house. And we've got no control over them, Mother Nature, and you can't control it unless, unless we have an easement to actually get in there to work on that. That's difficult, you can't do it.
So I'm looking at city code twenty-four one oh one, which is just a very general. Maybe this applies, maybe it doesn't. Where it says, "No person shall obstruct or endanger or place or permit anything to obstruct or endanger the free passage or proper use of the public of any street." So I guess my question is, seeing the pictures that happen, the flooding pictures in this neighborhood where residents on the far side of the flooding are literally not able to move down the street while the flooding is there. It's significant from time to time. What?
What option do they have?
Yeah, why does, why does that code not apply in terms of the city being able to say, hey, folks, do whatever you want to, to your yards, but it can't cause our streets to flood?
I can't answer that. I don't know, you know, if, you know, maybe you can't travel while the water's high. I mean, there are lots of people who have issues with high water after various rains, and they may not be able to drive. They may not be able to use that city street or that little bridge or whatever it is that's covered up with water.
Stewart Drive, Stewart Drive, Dorothy have been doing that since the sixties. I mean, so it's not uncommon. We've had Stewart Drive in here. My grandfather lived on Dorothy. You know, a rain like what they've got, he was stuck in his house till the water recited. I mean, if we had the easements, which, Stacy, I was where you were two years ago. Stewart Drive and Dorothy, and I'm like, man, we need to do something. Do you have the millions of dollars it would take for us to go and buy easements from every one of these people? And then on top of that, what kind of precedence are we setting in Woodland Hills, Erlene? Some people have built up their yards and got a pool, had landscaping done. It changes the whole aspect of where the drainage is. And we have, then do we step in and start doing lot by lot? And then getting into the legal, the legal aspect, which we've talked about, trying to, it's just, that piece is very sticky.
And, well, and staff has done a great job of explaining the various, you know, those tricky spots going down. I'm with what little I've heard. I'm not advocating individual drainage lot plans because it sounds like that gets.
You know, the specific issue.
However.
How do we enforce? And I, and this would be a thing. How do we, as a city, how would we? Is this the question? Let me ask you this. How do we enforce the developer or the landowner after the fact? After we've accepted something in, how do we police them from doing what they've done in Copperfield? Is that the question?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you're looking for an answer, I don't have it. I'm at.
You're looking for that answer.
Well, yeah, I think our, the homeowners are looking for that answer.
Well, we had a discussion at one point about what it would take to, to do single lots or to do comprehensive drainage plans and, and then make every builder adhere to that. And at that time, that was prior to, as we were developing PRS two. And I think we had some idea of the additional staff it would take to do that, additional burden on developers to do that. And, and that's when we had the discussion. And, and that council at that time felt like that they didn't want to go there, that they didn't want to do that.
And then the policing part of, of that is, is it after, before they've even done that or now that they've done that, what do we do to penalize them for doing that?
I think, I mean, perhaps.
Or rectify.
My first thought that jumps into your head is the question. I think the first thing is identifying, has something a homeowner done in their yard now caused a problem? And I'm talking about city streets. I think that's our responsibility, as we just heard, you know.
Our city streets are kind of caught in the middle of this because it happens to be between the area where the developer changed the lots from two to five and changed the landscape of the land and the water is not drained how it was originally intended. You know, the byproduct of that is it doesn't bother their homes. It bothers across the street where the water then flows up now into somebody else's basement. And that's why we've always, I've always thought that's kind of a civil matter between the homeowners. And I understand that that's in, I don't know whether it's in litigation now or whether, where that is, but there is a civil suit there that I think we have to wait and let that culminate and just see what happens.
Well, I can certainly see why that's appropriate. You know, if my next door neighbor does something that's, you know, adversely affecting me, I'm not going to run to the city. I'm just saying, from the city perspective, we now have a road, and maybe there are lots of them, but I'm, I'm just talking about this one tonight. We now have a road that is flooded and we have, we, it seems like it's perfectly acknowledged that it's because of something that happened subsequent to our drainage plan.
Right.
You know, after that was laid out.
Which is the city, you don't have any control over how they develop private lots and how they change that.
My question is, do we have control over our city roads or not?
The roads, yes.
Well, our city road is being flooded.
But not the adjacent property.
Stacy, I hate to say this, but we've, we've talked about this before and we've all had our emails about it before. We are where we're at. We've done it, we've done it. We did it with Wayne going. We did it when they came in and.
With all due respect, though, I wasn't in on that conversation, so I'm just.
But you, we said that to keep going down this road and to get staff to put in more time, you needed the correct amount of counsel. We've, we've answered the questions, we've talked about it, we're beating the dead horse. This is where we really are.
I've been told that the question, and you all seem to think the question was individual lot plans. And I, that's all I heard was kind of settled two years ago. I, I don't think it's inappropriate for me to ask about this issue because I'm new to the council and I'm new to this very issue and.
It's very appropriate to ask, but I don't, but I, but I don't think.
We've talked about it for three minutes, Robbie.
We had, how much work has staff done? How many emails have we had back and forth about this?
Well, that's a very good question because how much more are they going to do? Because this problem is not getting resolved and it's apparently just going to continue every single year.
It's going to continue until the civil matter is settled.
I'm just saying we have a city road that's being impacted and.
We have lots of, we have lots of city roads that are impacted.
I'm not talking about lots, I'm talking about one right now. And my question is simply, does the city have a responsibility to deal with a problem on a city road?
You just have to wait till Mother Nature.
Well, we already know what Mother Nature and homeowners have done to create the problem. So.
And our, and our answer really is if we don't have an easement, yes, we, that, we don't have an obligation nor do we have a, a plan to alleviate that drainage issue.
There is a drainage easement.
The drainage easement on the property.
Between the two properties that built up your grade, which is calling the flooding, there is a drainage easement between those two properties.
Well, there is a drain there. And the, and problem is the water does not drain. From what I understand, because the land around that has been altered, the original plan had a lot of that water going down to that basin by itself and not going into the drain. Now that, I mean, the drain still functions as it was designed. It's just that because the land's been altered and raised, now that water can all go in the drain. The drain can't work fast enough. You know, the question is, is, you know, the city going to spend $200,000 or whatever it takes to go in and redo that complete drain system?
To do something that's not our fault.
That's not our fault. It was the developer's fault.
Well, I think that's what enforcements are for, right?
But you can't enforce it because you've got no control over private.
Violation. When the builders built those lots up, because we don't regulate individual lot grades, there is no violation. There is nothing for us to enforce in that particular situation.
I guess in bringing that, that previous code up, I'm, I'm wondering if simply by doing something on your yard that does obstruct even for a bit of time, a road, meaning flooding, is that a code violation? So.
No.
Just, um, no.
It's not based on presently what we, how we, how we develop. And we looked at developing differently and we decided not to. But the fact that somebody moving water off is long, where we don't have an easement, that's their right to do so.
Right.
Just one other code I wanted to ask about in section twenty-five nine oh seven. Just, I guess it talks about our streets. That's the section dealing with streets. And under stormwater management, it says, "Storm drainage improvements shall consist of storm sewers which shall adequately drain the areas being developed. Open channels may be permitted with approval by the city manager. The design of drainage improvements shall be coordinated to the extent possible with present and probable future improvements so as to form part of an integrated system. Adequate provision shall be made for the disposal of stormwater and subject to the inspection and approval of the city manager." Does that apply to this situation?
It did, I think, when it was built because it was done to code when it was built. And it was done with that drain designed to relieve the water from that area based on where the grade was at the time. Now, the grade's been changed.
Okay, so it.
That it doesn't function the same, but that does not violate any code. It does not violate anything. I mean, everything was done properly to begin with. And that could, that could apply to a number of subdivision developments around town where people have changed the scope of the land or they've built something and diverted water somewhere else. And somebody else suffers from it because it comes across into their house or into their basement. And we, as a city, have no control over what private people do to alter those things.
Well, is that, I guess my last question is, is that a, is that how we want to leave it? Is that, is, are there, are there ways other cities deal with this kind of thing? Short, not going in the direction of individual drainage lot plans, but.
I think, I think there have been other instances and there are other cities, I'm sure, where people have civil suits against one another to resolve a problem that developed because one developer did something to affect something else. But like I said, we need to wait and just let that run its course and see what happens with that civil matter and see if it's not something that will force the other homeowners to do something to change the landscape so water will drain down to that retention basin more from that street.
Oh, did you want to add something?
I was just going to state that there, there is an approved drainage plan for the subdivision. But nothing about that drainage plan has been altered. The street's the same, the inlets are the same, the pipe between the homes is the same, the retention basin is the same. There has been no violation of that subdivision stormwater plan. The, the change has been what the lots, the developers did on those individual lots that has changed the course of where the water is going. And so our, the city's position has consistently been that this is a civil matter between one property owner and another. And as the mayor stated, I believe that's proceeding. And we'll see what the outcome is if, if it results in a change to that lot grade.
There were more than one loss, there were two, wasn't there?
I'm aware of one. I don't know if there is more than one.
Our history, Eric, is we've been very reluctant to get involved with civil matters of other property.
Oh, yeah, I, I don't.
And sometimes.
Disagreement.
I mean, I wish, I wish there was a better answer. I wish we had a big pot of money. We could say, we'll go in and correct all these things around the city, but.
I'm not.
It doesn't happen that way.
Coming in and saying that either. I'm, I'm saying there, it's not just property owners, it's the city that's involved because.
Well, the city's involved because our streets get flooded. But we have so many places around town where our streets will get flooded with the big rain and it's flooded for a little while and it goes down. And we've had a lot of instances where people have had water in their basement. And slowly with all the stormwater projects we've got that have gone on over the years, Steve can tell you that there are lots of places over on Melrose, there were a lot of people getting water in their basements. They don't do that anymore. Very, I mean, there are still a lot of people that get water up in their yards. And with time, it just slowly goes down and it goes away. It gets off the streets and you can travel. I can remember times you couldn't drive down Broadway because at Broadway and Carruthers, it, it got high enough that, you know, when my office was down there, one time we had fish floating from Capable Halligan across the parking lot.
But the city's fixing those.
The city has fixed a lot of those issues.
And where we have, we've done it either on our right of way or we've gotten easements in order to fix them. And that's, that's been our strategy in fixing them is that we've either done them on the right of way or we've gotten an easement to do it.
I've got one right now where it's not, it's not fixed. The base, the Erlene, I've got three houses that are right there that I've, I've got somebody's house has been built up, their backyard pool drains into their yard. It's, it's been that way since a previous owner bought the house in nineteen ninety-six. It got worse in the last five years. Come to me, ask me what to do about it. I take Stan out, we look at it.
Yeah, but that's two.
Literally nothing we can do. And it does the street too. I mean, it's the street too, and it's holding water there. And I hate it. And I don't, I don't like being able, having to tell them. And you were out there twice with me. And I hate telling them that there's nothing that we can do. You need to sue your neighbor, maybe. You know, it's, it's not, it, it's not fun to have that conversation. But it's where we've got to be. Unless we wanted to buy up five people's backyards and, and spend millions of dollars. And I, that doesn't make sense for the whole city. I mean, sometimes what, what is, what's horrible for, for a pocket of people is, is what you have to do for, for the whole city. That's the way, and I, I didn't like it two years ago. I don't particularly like it now, but it's what we've got to do.
I know we didn't answer your questions the way you may have wanted them answered, but. but I hope the discussion is maybe.
Well, and I, I, I guess my final, uh, question would be, um, are, are there some ways of dealing with this that perhaps we don't even know about? That wouldn't. Is it worth some, some looking into in other places? Um, if, if there's some creative, uh, spectacular way.
I don't know many other places in the city right now that probably get as bad as what this gets from what I've seen from pictures.
In general.
In general.
Elsewhere in the state, are, are there other cities that, um, you know, have come up with a unique way? Uh, is that, is that something that can be looked into or, um, worth the time to check?
I think that would be.
There are other codes that we've never.
If there are at least three council members that wanted us to, to spend staff time to do that, we could, that's something that we could, uh, send something out on listserv and see if we, see if there's any other solutions out there.
Is that a matter of sending out some email kind of thing to your, to different?
Well, we need to follow up with it if, if there are, you know, with what, what comes about it. So it'll take some staff time to do, but it's just, that, that's our policy.
I, I think you're gonna find that most other cities try to do things the same way. I mean, I, there aren't that many cities that have development codes.
We did the study session before, Molly, did we?
Was that something?
Check with others at that time, or do you remember?
I know, I recall. I mean, I, I think from my experience and Pam's experience, lots, the way that cities would do address and address it is by regulating individual lot drainage. Um, you know, but that's not to say we know what every other city out there does and it, we could query via listservs and things like that.
I don't know what information, I can't remember what all we had in it, but I just, I do remember there were some information from across the state, but I don't, I can't remember that information, what we, what we got as far as.
I know we looked at, you know, estimated costs and things like that and engineering drawings and things for individual lot drainage, but I don't know that we looked specifically at other types of regulations. Do you call Stan?
We didn't, okay. It was, okay.
I'm just wondering, I mean, with the legal.
I mean, from my perspective, I, you know, I, I don't think we should invest a lot of staff time in this, but, I mean, seeing what's out there, if it's sending some things out on a listserv to ask if, if anyone is doing something that might remedy this issue, I would support that.
Anybody else?
I would too.
Okay.
That'd be three, we'll, we'll, uh, send out a listserv and give you a report.
And just see what we come up with, okay?
And just to clarify, I do appreciate Robbie, the, the fact that, obviously this was a giant conversation two years ago. Um, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, so just needed a little more, a little more time, so thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to mention, um, and, you know, I mean, give some kudos to the, uh, Police Department for their handling of the various incidents and particular the unfortunate incident that happened at Hardee's last week. Uh, I talked to a few people and a few people have told me, uh, how quickly the department responded and, um, yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all.
I was on vacation.
Well, you can't go on vacation anymore.
Thank you.
Uh, any other council members have anything? Uh, I've got a few things. Uh, uh, the, the last week I filmed a session for Cape Chronicles, which I thought went very well. Uh, talking about, uh, basically what I expected as mayor and.
I watched it in its entirety, you did a great job.
Oh, well, thank you. Uh, the aquatics committee had their organizational meeting and, uh, we will meet again, uh, next week, uh, to talk about some things. Uh, I attended Cape County Farm Bureau Annual Banquet in Jackson. Governor Parson was in attendance. It was, uh, first time I ever met Governor Parson. A very nice governor, very nice, very polite and, uh, spoke very highly of, of, uh, Southeast Missouri and the farmers and, and he's a farmer himself. Uh, congrats Eric Cunningham. Uh, he has been elected, uh, president of the, uh, Missouri Municipal Attorneys Association. Uh, so you'll be busy doing stuff with that, that's good. Keep us posted. Congrats to Shelley Moore. I don't know if anybody saw this, this is the MML magazine. And I wanna make sure she gets another copy of that so she can put it on her bulletin board. I'm not right. Uh, I also wanna announce, uh, we do need to have a special meeting next Monday to certify the election results. Uh, I would hope you all could be here. I, I'd like to have it at five o'clock and just be done and it'll be done very shortly.
Do it at four if you're, maybe a little sooner.
I mean, doesn't make any difference, whatever, uh.
Staff would appreciate four.
I know they would, but five I think will work better for all of us at work and.
Very good.
It won't last 10 minutes.
All right.
While we have to certify the election results. Well, we gotta get the results back from.
Five o'clock Monday then.
Right. Uh, that will be here, very short meeting. Uh, our Citizens Academy begins August 22nd. Uh, how many participants do we have signed up? 30? That's great. I wanted to get more citizen involvement and, you know, we've had the Police Academy and Fire Academy and now we've got one that's gonna try to educate people on everything the city does, whether it's administratively or public works or whatever. And I think maybe that'll give the impetus to more people getting involved with advisory boards and whatnot. And, uh, I think that's great. Uh, Friday, the 11th, we're having an auction at the old police station of excess city stuff. Is it Saturday?
We're setting it up on Friday.
They're setting it up on Friday and Saturday at nine o'clock. It is safe, it's 11th, it's Saturday, I'm sorry.
I've been asked several times, are we auctioning off the building? No. It's just stuff that's in the building and then other stuff that have come from other departments there. So it's a, uh, come out, you might find yourself a bike that you want or something else, shelves and all sorts of things.
Shelves, desks, there's all sorts of stuff in there, I would imagine, that they didn't take to the new building, so. Probably get a good deal on a lot of stuff, so that's something to think about. Uh, can't think of anything else. You, Scott?
You had everything I had on my list. Thank you for covering it.
Did everything. Uh, are there any appearances tonight regarding items that are not listed on the agenda from anybody? I thought Scott was gonna get up and say something, he's running out the door. Okay. Uh, in that case, we'll have our agenda review.
All right, uh, we'll have a public hearing tonight. Um, this is a public hearing for, uh, levying the annual revenue tax, public health tax and special business district number two tax. I always say this is basically a math problem. So, uh, the, uh, the appraisal or the, uh, assessments are done and then there's so much per assessment and the fund, uh, by Hancock can only grow a small amount and so you divide all that up and it determines what the, what the assessments are. So, or what the, uh, rates are to produce that much income. So, that's, uh, that's how that works every year, but we are required to have a public hearing and so we will do that, uh, this evening. It's number 29 on your agenda, the first reading of, of levying those, uh, those taxes. Um, the consent agenda, we have number, uh, three is the utility easement, uh, for the signs on Misty Hollow Lane, second, third reading of that. Number four are the Staley's, uh, also on Misty Hollow Lane, uh, second, third reading of that. Uh, number five is adding stop signs at some locations, uh, second and third reading on that. Uh, number six is the record plat for Town Plaza subdivision number three, second and third. Uh, number seven is the sewer easement at the Schalbergers, uh, on Stepping Stone Way, second and third reading for that. And then number eight is the supplemental agreement, uh, with the airport aid agreement for the air service promotions, uh, with the Missouri Highway Transportation Commission, second and third reading of that. And then the record plat for Collins Mills Phase Two, second and third reading. Uh, that is all the second and third readings. Are there any questions on those? Since you had those before, I went through them pretty quick. Uh, number 10 will be the, uh, professional services agreement with Alliance Water Resources. We enjoy a great relationship with them, they're here tonight and we thank them for their, our relationship with them and, and this just renews for another year, um, with them. Uh, number 11 is a license indemnity agreement with Norwald Incorporated. This is a, um, Norwald has some property up on the top of a hill where there's gonna be a, uh, a, or we have a water tank up there and they need, they'll lie for them to build a, a home up there. Um, number 12 is a performance agreement with Jury Properties for Deerfield. Uh, number 13 is the capital improvement water system projects with Kaler, uh, to get the, the design work done with that. And then another one with Stan Tech, uh, to do the stormwater improvement projects and get those ready as we move out of PRS two. Uh, number 15 is the acceptance of the public improvements at Collins Mills Phase Two. Uh, 16 is the, uh, final payment with Cotner for the downtown LED streetlights. Had a lot of good comments about those and, and the coverage of those that reaches all the way to the sidewalks and so I think a lot of good, um, uh, input with those. Uh, 17 is the final payment, uh, trico for Meadow Brook Tank Number One painting and then accepting some improvements at Misty Hollow and, uh, Landcraft Sanitary Sewer and approval of the primary plant at Highlands at the Hopper Crossing. Any questions on any of those consented items? Any items you'd like to remove for further discussion? Or need to declare your, uh, potential?
Yeah, I need to sustain from nine and 15 due to financial consequences. Is that right?
Nine and 15, okay, get those.
New ordinances. Um, first one is, uh, a change in our ordinance regarding solid waste. Uh, we, uh, been working with the Health Department on some of the, uh, dumpsters and the cleanliness of those and we came up, uh, found out that we didn't really have an ordinance, uh, regarding overfilling, uh, commercial dumpsters. We have it with private dumpster, uh, with private, our private, uh, uh, trash cans, but not with a commercial, so this allows us to, uh, to enforce that and ticket that uh, should, uh, somebody over, be overfilling their dumpster causing a health hazard. Um, number 22 is a design bill contract, uh, allows us to go ahead and negotiate with this for design improvements to Capahol Field. Um, this, uh, I believe is, uh, chooses one and an alternate to, uh, negotiate with. Uh, number 23 is a stop sign at South Sunset Boulevard. 24 is, uh, general warranty deed for the Rivers Edge Automotive that was purchased at 1237 North Water Street, uh, accepting that deed. Number 25 is, uh, a temporary construction easement, uh, for sanitary sewer repair on jury land development. 26 is the redevelopment, uh, of the Esquire Tax Income and Financing Redevelopment Plan. First one is for approving that, uh, plan. And 27 is for the, uh, the redevelopment agreement with the city, uh, for that action. I know we have people here with, uh, the Esquire and we certainly appreciate your investment in our city and, uh, your confidence that we're excited about what's, uh, gonna take place. And, uh, thank you. Uh, 28 is a record plat at Deerfield and then 29 is, uh, from the hearing is the levying of the taxes. Uh, you have, uh, also memos for sales tax revenue, transportation trust fund and the public safety trust funds, uh, that, uh, shows all the revenue from those, what was projected and, uh, its expenditure, so. Any questions?
One quick one, so I did read up to 21, so this was something that Old Town Cape and.
Yes.
Health Department, so they're feeling a lot better about what's going on in some of our alleys downtown.
Yeah, and, and, and to give, uh, the deputy city manager, uh, Molly May, a lot of credit. She, uh, worked with them and, and some meetings and identified some key items and this is one of those we're bringing forward to take action on.
I know they had some heartburn going back some months, so glad to see us forward with that. Um, the only thing I'd add real quick on 26 and 27, representing the council on magnet, I'm, I'm really excited to see, uh, that get to this point. We've talked for months that, um, that Esquire, this is, this was gonna be its last opportunity. So, for it to get to, uh, to us is a, is a big achievement and, uh, something that we can be really proud, proud that, that, of what they're gonna do. So, I'm very excited.
Without your foresight, that building probably would not be there in a few years. Just be parking, so that's big, thank you. Uh, there's also advisory board minutes there, no appointments.
I'll now call our regular session to order. Uh, we'll have roll call.
Here.
Mayor Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Guard.
Here.
Councilmember Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Kinder.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
And Councilmember Presson.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
It's a move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Guard, second by Mr. Presson, all those, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we do have a public hearing tonight regarding the levying of the annual city revenue tax, public health tax and special business district number two tax for the fiscal year ending on the 30th day of June 2019, which is number 29 on the agenda. Uh, anybody here to appear before the council on the public hearing? One more time, anybody here to appear before the council on the public hearing? Seeing now, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, you know, at this point, we'll go ahead and take this item in its regular order since there was nobody here to discuss it, so we'll just do it in a regular order with new ordinances. Anybody here tonight, uh, to make comments on any item that's listed on the agenda? Any comments on any item that is on the agenda? If not, then we'll move to the consent agenda. Eric? We got a long one tonight.
Number 18 dash 91, an ordinance accepting a permanent utility easement from Christopher M. Snyder and Lauren P. Snyder for the 276 Misty Hollow Lane in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting a permanent utility easement from Christopher M. Snyder and Lauren P. Snyder for 276 Misty Hollow Lane in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 92, an ordinance accepting a permanent utility easement from Joseph M. Staley and Jane D. Staley for 286 Misty Hollow Lane in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting a permanent utility easement from Joseph M. Staley and Jane D. Staley for 286 Misty Hollow Lane in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 93, an ordinance amending Schedule C of Section 26 dash 121 of the C code by adding stop signs at various locations in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance amending Schedule C of Section 26 dash 121 of the C code by adding stop signs at various locations in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 94, an ordinance proving the record plat of Town Plaza subdivision number three. An ordinance proving the record plat of Town Plaza subdivision number three. Number 18 dash 97, an ordinance accepting a permanent utility and sewer easement from Schalberger LP for 171 and 201 Stepping Stone Way in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting a permanent utility and sewer easement from Schalberger LP for 171 and 201 Stepping Stone Way in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 98, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a supplemental agreement to the Airport Aid Agreement for Air Service Promotion with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. An ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a supplemental agreement to the Airport Aid Agreement for Air Service Promotion with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Number 18 dash 100, an ordinance proving the record plat of Collins Mills subdivision Phase Two. An ordinance proving the record plat of Collins Mills subdivision Phase Two. Number 18 dash 102, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a fifth addendum to agreement to the professional service agreement with Alliance Water Resources in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 103, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute license indemnity agreeing with Norwald Inc. in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 108, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a performance guarantee agreeing with Jury Properties Inc. for Deerfield Estates Phase One in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 109, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement for the capital improvement water system projects with Kaler Engineering and Land Surveying Inc. in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 18 dash 110, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services.
Tech Consulting Services Inc. for stormwater improvement projects in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
You have the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion, we accept the consent agenda. Motion by Dan Preston, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Shelley Moore. Any further discussion?
Please mark my extension in nine and 15.
I think we did that already. All right. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. New ordinances. Bill number 18-101, an ordinance amending chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances in the city of Cape Girardeau regarding a collection of solid waste.
It's a move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guard, second by Mr. Essex. Any discussion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18-104, an ordinance authorizing city manager to negotiate a design bill contract for design improvements to Capaha Field in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
It's a move.
Motion by Ryan, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Guard. Any discussion?
I'd like to add something on this, and I've been contacted by a few in that, in that neighborhood. I know that we're just in the design bill, but I want to remind again, I'd really like to get the, some information at some point to the boulevard and historic district and some of those, just so that we can let them know about what impact, if any, there will be to some of their houses and, and neighborhood, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to them once we have a, have a plan and, and can share and then, because we have a parking, you know, parking plan too, which would be probably what they're most concerned about.
Absolutely.
Good point. Anything else? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 18-105, an ordinance amending Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the city code by establishing a stop sign on South Sunset Boulevard in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
It's a move.
Motion by Mr. Guard. Second by Dan Preston. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 18-106, an ordinance accepting a general warranty deed from Rivers Edge Automotive LLC for property located at 1237 North Water Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Motion by Mr. Guard. Second by Mr. Preston. Any discussion? I think it's a wise move to purchase property down there in that floodplain that, that is adjacent to other property we own and it was a bargain to get it, so I think it's a good move. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 18-107, ordinance accepting temporary construction easement from Jury Land Development Incorporated for a sanitary sewer main repair in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Motion by Mr. Guard. Second by Mr. Preston. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. 18-112, an ordinance designating a portion of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri as a redevelopment area, approving the Esquire Theater Tax Increase Financing Redevelopment Plan, making findings related thereunto and authorizing certain actions by city officials.
It's a move.
Motion by Mr. Gunn, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Essex. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill 18-111, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement in connection with the Esquire Theater Tax Increase Financing Redevelopment Plan.
It's a move.
Motion by Mr. Gunn. Second by Ryan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 18-113, ordinance approving a record plat of Deerfield Estates Phase One. Motion by Mr. Guard, do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Preston. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And last but not least, the result of our public hearing, an ordinance providing the levying of the annual city revenue tax, public health tax, special business district number two tax for the fiscal year ending on the 30th day of June 2019. Motion by Mr. Preston, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Guard. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I know of no appointments, is there any other business this evening? If not, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
Adjourn to closed session.
We will adjourn to a closed session, I'll read that in just a minute.
Move to adjourn to a closed session.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Excuse me, we need a statutory session.
I will. The city council of Cape Girardeau, Missouri may vote to hold a closed session listed in the revised section, Missouri 610-021, including confidential or privileged communication with its attorneys. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We will adjourn to closed session. Thank you all for being here tonight.